City of International Falls to order. It is 5:30, Monday, November 18th. If you could all join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love that. That is the loudest we've ever had the Pledge of Allegiance because usually these are Committee of the Whole meetings that people come in like this and we don't do that. So, thank you. First item is the roll call. Please note, all members of the council are present. First item on the agenda would be to approve the agenda. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any additions or deletions, so the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we go to the approval of the minutes. First one we have is a special Committee of the Whole, November 4th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing for the Fifth Avenue West meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Go to our last regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we have the minutes from our Committee of the Whole meeting last Monday. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Any discussion? I would just like to note that vast majority of you are here because of one of the items that we had on the Committee of the Whole meeting. The reason that I had asked to have it on our regular city council is so that we could have discussion about it. I'm sure most of you guys are here about the jail. Or not, I'm sorry, not the jail, the police station. We're going to be having discussion about that later. We're going to be providing information to the community of where we've been, how we've gotten to this point. The council is not ready to move forward with any action, and I'm not saying that because the room is filled. I'm saying that because we've got, doing our due diligence to understand the project. So when we get to that point on the agenda, we'll talk it through. Please give us an opportunity to explain where we've been, how we've got to this point. And then after, after that, we will definitely take questions from the audience. So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we go to our special city council meeting of November 12th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Councilor Holden, a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we go to our canvassing board meeting of November 14th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Councilor Holden, even though it was longer, but still counts. Do we have a second?
Second.
You totally got thrown out of that one, Walt. Got a second by Councilor Wagner.
I'll have another chance.
You will. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we go to the payments and claims. We have city transfers going to the permanent improvement fund of $66,666.66. That's coming evenly out of the 601 Water and the 603 Sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. We have funds going to the Reserve for Capital Outlay, the 403 Fund, coming from the 601 Water in the amount of $14,693. And the 603 Sewer Fund in the amount of $5,874.25. For a total transfers of $87,233.91. Accounts payable, International Falls claims of $554,995.67. Airport Board Claims of $5,179.89. And just an interesting situation of a donation that was received that had to go into a second account. We have another International Falls Library Board Claims of 1,000 even. And Airport Major Capital Claims of $366,684 even. For a total accounts payable of $927,859.56. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the payments and claims.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to bring forward that's not on the agenda? Hearing none? Please.
I actually did not hear you talk about the Police Department. I have two questions, actually. The first one is about the airport and the money left over after the COVID payments. By my calculation, after talking with Betty, there's roughly 850, 900 grand sitting in the airport operating expense fund. Is that accurate?
You would have to ask Betty or the Airport Commission on that. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Airport Commission is going to better define that. However, the Airport Commission just did tell us at their last meeting that $569,000 of that will be used for their maintenance and operations for 2025.
Okay.
So to clarify further than that, you would need to speak with the Airport Secretary and Airport Manager, Kyra Enthor.
And my other question is, can you, I couldn't make it. You had that special council meeting, I think, on November 4th. Can you explain the utility fund that you're looking at?
A utility fund? We're not looking into anything. It was... Utility fund, it would be better to have the city engineer here to discuss that. It is a fund that the city may be able to utilize to do work on our water treatment center. Behind that, we don't have a utility fund as of this moment, correct?
Well, for clarification, Mayor, thank you. The utility fund report that was presented covers the water fund, the sewer fund, and the storm sewer fund. And that report laid out what it would look like over the next 10 years for capital, understanding what the rate increases and rates would need to be to sustain the, each of those funds.
Okay.
Because currently, we have sewer and water. But this would be adding storm water into it, and it would be a utility fund that would be financed to be able to do the work at the water treatment center.
And that money would come off the levy?
No.
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 So everything that we're currently paying, which includes storm sewer maintenance, would...
Does not.
Who does storm sewer maintenance now?
Storm sewer maintenance is currently in the General Fund 101. And it should be its own separate fund as designed and, not designed as described by the utility rate study. That should be its independent own fund. And we've never had a large amount in that fund. But now with the MSA and moving towards being regulated to do some of those things ourselves versus having the state regulation, is why we need to go to a storm sewer fund.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
To clarify if there is or is not right now a fund. The main question that Ed brought up.
There is not currently a storm sewer fund.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other, any other audience question? Please.
Mayor Kutaska comments, would you like them reserved until a discussion?
Please, please. All right, we will, any other items that are not on the agenda? All right, we'll go down to the consent agenda. These are 2025 license renewals. We have the license renewals for Curb Appeal Lawn Care. It's a snowplow license. Dairyland Operations, DBA Duncan and Baskin Robbins, it's restaurant license. Dollar Tree Stores, Dollar Tree 3694, a light fireworks license. DNS Pizza, Doing Business as Domino's Pizza, a restaurant license. Kennedy's Cab, City Cab and Transport LLC, a taxi license. Lars Lumber and Plowing, a snowplow license. Sarah Neville Inan, a massage therapy, massage individual license. And Steve Boyham Construction, a snowplow license. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler.
All right.
We have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we go to licenses that may include tobacco or liquor. CP, CAPL Retail LLC, Doing Business as Joe's Quick Mart. It's a 3-2 off sale license, cigarette license, gasoline pump license, and a restaurant license. CAPL Retail LLC, Doing Business as Joe's Quick Mart. A restaurant license, fireworks license, gasoline pump license, restaurant license, and a 3-2 off sale license. Edwards Oil Incorporated, Doing Business as Little Brown Jug. Cigarette license, off sale liquor license, On the Rocks LLC, on sale liquor license, a Sunday liquor license, restaurant license, jukebox license, pool table license, and an off sale liquor license. Orton Motor Incorporated, Doing Business as Orton's International Falls Senics. A cigarette license, gasoline pump license, and 3-2 off sale license. And Timberpins Bowling Center, an off sale license, or I'm sorry, an on sale license, restaurant license, bowling alley license, pool table license, and Sunday liquor license. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second from Councilor Holden. Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero.
Thank you, Walt.
Next, approve extending offer of employment for the part-time seasonal parks and facilities assistant position. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve that hire for Miranda Chalene.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Mayor, if I may, correction?
Oh, I'm on the back one. I'm sorry. Evelyn Perkins. I'm sorry. Evelyn Perkins. Motion by Councilor Bowler?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Yeah, that was almost awkward. I almost hired someone that wanted to resign. Next, we have acknowledge and accept a letter of resignation from emergency medical technician. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, approve allow necessary expenses for up to six ambulance personnel to attend the Arrowhead EMS Conference Expo in Duluth, January 15th through the 19th. This is a budgeted item. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we have Public Works Committee recommendation to approve the purchase of a hydraulic snow blade pusher with the funding from Street Capital Outlay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Would we be receiving this this year already? Or is this one of those items that's going to be backed up for a year?
No, it won't be backed up for a year. We'll have to be using the old one yet for a little bit. But the reason they didn't do a trade on it is because it's not tradable. I mean, it's salvageable enough if somebody, we're going to put it on non surplus equipment rather than trade it because it's basically done, yeah. See if we can get out of it that way. But otherwise, no, it didn't sound like it'd be much more than... We might have used it a couple times this year, so it gets older.
And we have...
Can you speak up these that we can hear back here?
Okay. Otherwise, it'll be here soon.
Okay.
It's, it's not one of those one year in advance things. It's manufactured and ready to go once you purchase it, so it'll be fine.
Okay, perfect. All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, Committee of the Whole recommendations. So this is the follow-up of the presentation that we received from Kraus Anderson this last Monday. I want to give everyone an update of how we got to where we're at because I think that over the course of time, things have gotten kind of lost. And we have all the documentation of this, so if anybody wants to get more information, we're more than willing to share it. We're not hiding anything about this. Well, we're at a point where we, we have no trust in government. And so we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can on how we've gotten to this point. On early 2022, myself, the city administrator, and Councilor Kraus were invited to go and meet with the county about their new jail. They, the city had worked with, with the county for many years on being part of the jail, part of the law enforcement center, and moving forward in that capacity. We had a handful of meetings. We had discussions. And the question that we had was, how much is the city going to get charged to move forward with the county? At that time, early 2022, they didn't know what the costs were going to be on the jail, the facility, so we didn't have an answer for that. On October 18th, 2022, we had met with Kent Corbitts, which was the program manager for the jail and the project that they were doing there. They were asking the city to provide upfront costs of $819,100 for upfront to be part of the project with the, with the jail. Above and beyond that, there would be an additional 11% of soft costs that were unknown. And there was going to be another 12% of remodel costs that were going to be unknown. That was in October 2022, which we had already wrapped up our budget for the following year. Budgets are, have to be into the state by, I believe it's September. Is that correct? We have to have our budgets into, by September. So there was no way that we could come up with $819,000 that was being asked by the county to join in with their, with their project. That would have been the upfront cost that the city had to pay to be part of that project. On December 30th, 2022, we got a letter from the county chair, and they gave us until February 22nd, 2023, to decide if we were willing to raise our rent, rent from $75,000 a year with the county to $112,884 a year, and to commit to a long-term contract with them. So it was two years that we, we knew that the price would have been $112,884, but they wanted us to go into a long-term contract without knowing what the, the next potential 18 years were going to be. We didn't have those numbers. So at that point, with those two conversations that we had, the city reached out to Bacchus Community Center, knowing that the Northland Counseling Center was going to be moving out of that building and had conversations about the timing being appropriate for us to move the, the police station temporarily into Bacchus. It was going to be $75,000, which is the same price that we used to pay the, the county. So the way that the city council looked at it at that time is this is temporary. We'll be able to look and negotiate with the county to be able to have conversations on what it looks like to go into the new jail. We'll be able to have conversations to see what other opportunities that we have to move the police station. Because I think everybody in this room has to agree that the, the police station being in Bacchus was temporary. I think all of us can agree to that, whether they went to the, went back to the county and we negotiated a deal with them, or we move into a different facility. I think we all agree that it doesn't make sense for the police station to be long-term in the Bacchus Community Center. So in June of 2023, we did move into the Bacchus Community Center. Over the course of the last year, we did sell the Kutaska Building to, to Kutaska. The city owned it. We sold it to them for a dollar. At the time, we were not looking at that building for the police station. They had reached out. They said they wanted to rebuild the building and make it into a facility that made sense for them. And, you know, to get, to move forward, we did that. We sold that building to Kutaska for a dollar. As we started to move forward, they found that that was not going to work for them. And they found a different facility. In fact, they went to Bacchus. So they reached out to us and asked if that would be something we would be interested in again. And we had the assumption at that time that we would be able to trade that building again for a dollar. That was the, the belief of this city council, and we did reach out and have that conversation. They said no. They had put money into the building. They, they wanted to have $20,000. I believe that was the number. Is that correct?
Yep.
$20,000, and the city said no, but to help move the facility, we would do $5,000. Before we did that, we had the city building inspector, along with Councilor Holden and Councilor Bowler, walked through the building to make sure that it would meet our needs and be able to be feasible moving forward. We were told that there was going to be some problems with the building. We knew that the roof was going to be in rough shape. We knew that there was, it was going to be in a residential area. We, we, we had a lot of consideration that, we've had conversations here, back and forth, between Committee of the Holes, our safety committee meeting. And we decided, you know what? It would be worth the $5,000 to find out if this is going to be worth our while. We, at that point, did our due diligence. We reached out to Kraus Anderson to find out what the cost would be to get the building up and running and moving forward. That's where we get to today with the facility conditions assessment.
Did you see bids many of them else?
We, I'm really sorry. We, we're not taking public comment right now. So, and no, we didn't because they, we ended up going with our city attorney, or a city engineer worked that deal, and it's a contract that we do not have to go out for bids for. So we ended up having Kraus Anderson went through and did a facilities assessment. And it, it came out that the facility is in poor condition, which I think we all understood. Where we were a little bit overwhelmed with was the final dollar amount. The final dollar amount came out to be $4.6 million to fix the building, to make it into a police station. I think all of us had sticker shock when we got that information on Monday. Moving forward from that, the other thing is, is a new police department, if you were to build from scratch at the same size that what, what we're looking at doing over there, would be $35 million to $40 million if you were to build it from scratch. So here we are, trying to share the information with, with the community on where we've been, how we've gotten here. And I want to hand off a little bit to the city administrator, to Councilor Wagner and Councilor Kayler, who have been working on this project, to see if they have anything to add before we move forward. I also want to reach out to our police chief to see if they have anything to move forward with.
No, that's about it in a nutshell. You know, but any of this, we've looked at, none of it, we've all agreed, will ever increase the levy. That is the goal. That is the ultimate goal. So if it, if it can't be done, unless you increase the levy, we are not going to do it. And that's what we've been working hard to try to, try to do, to keep our levy where it's at, or lesser. I think we've done a good job of that so far. So that's a big part of it.
And I just want to be clear, and the one thing you brought up, the money they're asking for capital costs wasn't for the, a new space. It was for the space that the law enforcement center, as the sheriff's office and police station were. They didn't decide that they were going to not rehab it and go with a new office for the sheriff's apartment till later in, I think, 2023. So that wasn't towards a new building. And that all being said, we never said we weren't interested in working with the county, but that goes both ways. We haven't heard from when they decided that they were going to make their own office. We haven't heard maybe some casual conversations, nothing concrete. So as part of our due diligence, I would like our city administrator to reach out to the county if they're willing to see what we could work out possibly. But we're not going to agree to a deal that isn't fair to the citizens of International Falls. And I've been hearing a lot about we're throwing away taxpayer money. We're not watching that. Well, I'm not much of a numbers man. He will be up here, I understand, here in a little bit. But I, I don't think you need to be much of one. For the last two years, we've saved close to $70,000 by moving from the law enforcement center to Bacchus. And they just raised our rent for the same area. We weren't growing, getting anything, anything else. And they raised our rent almost $42,000 a year. And I've worked in the building for 30 years. It has plenty of work it needs on its own. I'm not saying it can't be done. And both buildings also are, were built in about the same era. They're about the same age. So, and otherwise, you filled in everything I had to add.
City Administrator?
I have nothing additional. That covers all of it. Did a good job.
Chief, do you want to come up and, and mention anything? Because I know that this has been all over the community, and I'd love to have you speak on behalf of it.
Yeah, I mean, just to start off, I think you guys covered your, your portion of it. My concern mainly is with the operations and functions of the Police Department. And like we always say, our, our service is to the citizens. At the most fiscally responsible rate we can offer that. So I'm not going to speak so much as to the building, which I think you covered adequately, but the fact that no matter where we are in the city, our operational functions will remain the same. There's been, there's been concern about that, and I want to let everyone know that that is our primary concern as a police chief and deputy chief. A lot of this stuff is above my head, and I do acquiesce to all of your decision-making. And I've tried to help along the way with my recommendations for the different things. We said going into this that one of the things we have to watch is the price. And I've said that from the beginning. I said it with the move to Bacchus. I think it's important to... I think it's important to be transparent with the citizens, and which is why I tracked all the costs to the move to Bacchus. But somewhere along the way, and I wanted to speak to this a bit, the transparency didn't get there. And I don't want to speak for all of you, and I don't want to be disrespectful. So I'll just say on my own behalf, I'll take some of that responsibility. Then for some reason, there's a disconnect between the public's observation of what we did and what we we did. And I think, at least as far as the police chief goes, I need to be open to speaking with everyone as needed to try to explain what our goals were, how we met those goals, and why we did what we did as far as the police department. You did a very good job just now. But like you said, we were having questions about why are you up there? Can you stay up there for good? I think we made, like you said, one of the recommendations I made, if you want to go to Bacchus, we can only do it on a short-term basis. Nothing wrong with Bacchus. They've been gracious hosts. It's not made for a police department. I made that I I feel I made that clear when you asked me what my recommendations were for that. Like I said, I I I think one of the things, and I said this too about a year and a half ago, that we as a city, and I mean, no disrespect, but we need to get better at conveying our message and what we're trying to accomplish to the citizens. I I I think time and again, there's there's been, like I said, a disconnect between what we want, which I think our goals are fair and admirable, to what they think they're getting from us. And I'm going to be honest, I think it's a good thing we have a full house here tonight to to talk about this and get this out because I've said this about a year and a half ago, too. Discussing things and having discourse online never leaves anything positive. I think we all need to talk and come to an understanding. And at the end of the day, we do specifically, police departments answer to the citizens of what their their desires and needs are. So not so much about the building itself, but just how we're operating as a police department and how we can do better as far as conveying our messaging. So I'm eager to have that discussion. If people aren't comfortable discussing that here and now, I can do it anytime they want. They can come up to Bacchus and talk to me about it anytime they want to. But I would enjoy any kind of discourse in that regard.
Chief, you know, I think that the city council is more than willing to accept the conversations about funding and what what that looks like and why we made the financial decisions of what we made. Could you just kind of discuss? One of the concerns that that we're hearing is the road, the Second Avenue East, and the the speeds that could come out of there or the traffic that is caused by that. That's one of the things that we're hearing. And then the other one, being in a residential neighborhood, could you just discuss how that works into the police department's model or how that may be a challenge?
And again, this is part of the messaging because I believe in, I apologize for not being well versed on zoning titles, and Betty can speak to that further about the actual zoning of that building. It is zoned for a police department. To your question about the Twenty-second Street breakthrough, one of the first things we discussed in in considering that space was making the road a throughway to be able to ease onto fifty-three. In my view, I I don't think that there's any change. Listen, we're in a we're in a neighborhood now in Bacchus, and we were at the LEC, where we have to be cognizant of our speed at all times anyway. I I don't feel we've generated complaints in the Bacchus area or at the former LEC residents in regards to how we respond to calls. There are statutes governing how we respond to calls. At any road in town, if we're actively monitoring or patrolling, we could be on Second Avenue East and have a have a police department in Bacchus and get a call that requires us to go lights and sirens. And and we may have to go at speeds that are safe to maintain, but still speeds to get to that call. It's part of our discretionary powers as police officers and also the training we receive, you know? So I appreciate the concern, but it's a concern shared by all officers in our department as well for the safety of everyone in the city.
And and I guess my my last question to you would be kind of what the same question that I had when you wanted to go to to Bacchus. How do how would it work if you're going to be on the third floor of Bacchus to receive a call? Are we, and this is something that's happened relative since COVID. We dispatch from our cars as a general rule. So the likelihood of the officers being sitting at Bacchus and/or a new facility, wherever that is, and being dispatched from a building to emergency, what's the likelihood of that?
Again, it's a matter of of semantics when you're talking about, well, where's the police department, in my opinion. And and again, location in this day and age is not as relevant as it may have been years ago, simply due to the fact that we are mobile in all regards. And to be fair, you you can't very well predict where your next call is going to come. And if our officers are in an office in Bacchus and they get a call over to the South Falls area, or vice versa, it's going to be the same amount of time. Now, to your point, we do have a lot of officers. Now, they're mainly proactively patrolling at all times. And I think everyone in this room can attest to the fact that our officers are out the car all the time. So I I don't think I think that concern, it was leave it, yeah, it was brought to the forefront with COVID just because of our social distancing requirements. But truthfully, I I think any area in the city that you put us in, the radius of the city isn't big enough for it to make that much of a difference, even if we're always stationary, which we never are.
Perfect. Anything to ask the chief? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Mitch, did you have anything to add?
No.
I never expect you to have anything to add.
Thank you.
All right. So if nobody else has anything to bring forward, as a general rule, we usually allow five minutes. But we have so many people here tonight. We'll go with five minutes for a little while. In the event that we start to get every person in the room, we might might cut that back to three. But I would be more than willing to allow folks to come up and give your thoughts moving forward. I'll need your name, address, and then you can make your statements.
Hello. My name is Susan Wadega. And did you say address also?
Yes.
One oh seven Park Avenue in the Falls. And thank you, Harley, for your explanation regarding the whole issue. And you're right, I'm sure most of us are here for the whole police department issue. And thank you also, Chief Koscheck, for your input on this also. So someone handed out the December thirtieth county letter from Wade Pablik, and then also the response from the city of International Falls. And just looking at the two, the letter from Wade Pablik states in the first paragraph, "We agree a cost-effective solution for our taxpayers is needed." In the response from the city, I have underlined in the first paragraph, "Please be aware, this decision was not made lightly or without extensive deliberation. We strongly believe offering our officers room to grow and build their identity in an accessible environment will ultimately better serve our community." Nothing about finances. It's about building an identity, which I don't understand that part. And then also, "Please note, the decision to dissolve our lease was made based on a long-term plan to establish a shared space for fire, ambulance, and police department in the future." And so far, what I'm understanding is Cootaska Building is police department.
That's correct.
So we're not talking about this long-term goal with the ambulance and fire station. This is just a police department.
Correct.
So I'm all for law enforcement. My dad was one of the original officers in the new law enforcement building. I believe they should have the equipment needed to do their job and the support of the community. The joint law enforcement building was a center for the departments, the sheriffs and the police to collaborate and work together. I don't understand the desire to have separate identities or to duplicate bills by maintaining two different buildings and to no longer have the easy access to collaborate. Again, since COVID, everything is pretty much tech anyway. But my questions, I guess, and again, they probably were already addressed, but what was the main reason to not be in the same facility as the sheriff's department? And number two, is this the most fiscally responsible route? Which you've stated also, you guys were all shocked by the amount that you got for the numbers. And then also, again, I brought up the long-term goals, where we're just addressing the police department at five million dollars. That's not including the long-term goal of ambulance and fire department. So we're looking at further expenses down the road for that potentially. And personally, I don't care what uniform. I don't care about their identity. If I'm in need of help, I'm thankful we have law enforcement here to help us. So that's ultimately not building an identity to better serve the community. Just they're here to serve the community, and your job is to be responsible to the taxpayers and also listen to us. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Hey, anybody else? Eric, do you want to come up and bring your Cootaska questions?
Eric Strand, eighteen thirty-one Fourth Ave East. Thanks for thanks for the time. I've been to other meetings, and, you know, I've 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 dwelt on the on the terminology, but synergy, you know, nondisclosed plans, those have been have been talked about tonight. The residents that I did visit with, and I really did want to present that as each individual's cease and desist. So, you know, the county was is mandated to build that structure. And and I thought I thought the county numbers were about twenty million. And just from this report on Monday, for just the 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 police department, the county sure seems to be getting a lot of bang for their buck for twenty million, if that if that is, in fact, the number. But but the 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 letter that that and Sue had mentioned as well, but that letter talked about the future plans. And and I I go back to the property. I I certainly don't, I mean, I am not faulting the police department. We walk a lot in the evenings, wave to the guys. I mean, it's it's wonderful, and and I appreciate I appreciate all of them. But again, this, so the property. So that property is landlocked, two-hundred feet by four-hundred-and-thirty-three feet. That's landlocked by who? By KETA. It's 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 zoned public, so technically, yes, it is could be a police station. But KETA owns that land around it. And with where everything has been at with the the, you know, the the stresses of talking of the the Airport Commission and 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 all those things, what's the likelihood that that the county is gonna just, the the county representation on KETA is just gonna say, sure, we'll we'll give you that land? So you're you're ready to seemingly, before talking of tonight, of of hopefully taking taking some extra time on this, but to 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 build and renovate this thing for four-point-eight or whatever that number is, and not even have that land around it to to know what the plans are? So again, to me, it just seems like there's all these plans going on under the current that we're we have no we have no no idea of what really is the long-term plan. And and in that letter, that that's really about the first that it's that I've really seen it in print of of the 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 long-term plans there. So but at the end of the day, you folks are the fiduciary for us, for the for the people that that elected. And, you know, managing these taxpayer dollars is for our for our benefit. And not everybody can have ivory towers. Not everybody can work in ivory towers. And and I just think there's a new county. There's there's a new county governance, new county commissioners. Haven't heard much conversation about the about the new new representation at the county, conversation with that. So I'm I'm excited to hear what does come of that. I'd be surprised if there isn't some some motion on that. But but I I do hope, I do hope you take your time. And again, my focus is on that location. And 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 modern policing, well, if the if that much less is required of of brick and mortar, well, four-point-eight doesn't cut it for for modern policing. So but but again, just just wanted to share that. And and I'm really I'm I'm really concerned about that that of the property because you can't put money into this one unless you have that in your back pocket. And I I don't know how you're going to get that deal done with KETA. Can I, because I one one quick question. I don't believe it's been requested at all city presence, a city recommendation or a city request for KETA? Has that been on KETA's board?
No, but historically, historically, all of those those properties that have been over there, when there is a a potential buyer, it has went. So anyone that's been willing to buy it, KETA has sold. So I don't I don't think we've had one piece of that one piece in that area that has ever sold for more than a dollar. And if we're talking about us having half the representation on that board, I have to assume it would almost be a shoe-in if the city wants to buy its own property, that we could buy our own property for a dollar.
You can buy a common interest of half.
Fair enough. Mike?
Yeah, we we've had conversation about KETA and that, and it's it's not, we've had it a few times. So just haven't been on the agenda. But I I look to see things go good.
I did after I did just mention it to the director, just to give him a heads up, that this was one of our ideas, but no, nothing official like that.
And I just wanted to ask you one question. And because you had you had reached out and had conversations with the neighbors, the the one thing about it is, I understand the concern on Second Avenue East for the speed. But for me, I would love to have a police station in my backyard. So I I'm just wondering if that if there's a concern in some capacity because we're not putting in the jail there, but please.
I had I had one person. And they would live very close to the corner of Nineteenth Street and Second Avenue East. And and they flat-out said to me, those stop signs are just suggestions. And there is, that is the the absolute worst obeyed semaphore in town.
I would I would I would I would say that most stop signs are just for suggestions for people. Yes. Them included.
In front of my house, and that's in front of school, that is just a suggestion also.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to bring forward? Please, Lois.
Hello, everyone. For the record, my name is Lois Lundin. I live at twenty-two twenty-two Third Avenue East. I'm here as a citizen of International Falls, not Bacchus. First of all, Mike Koscheck and Mitch Lussard, thank you for the service that you provide to our city. Nobody is disputing the quality of that service. This is a financial issue that's of concern to the citizens of our community. There was something said earlier, and I had had a conversation with someone earlier today, that it was explained to me that this renovation, the funding from it will come from existing police department budget, and there will not be additional levy to the city residents. That doesn't compute to me. We're talking four-point-six to five million dollars. I don't know how this isn't going to affect the citizens of the city. So I think for transparency's sake, it would be really good if that could be explained more completely when a plan is developed. Explain that to the city because people don't get it.
Can I just interject that I am not going to agree to four million dollars to upgrade any building.
Good.
None of us are gonna.
So I can just add add this piece. As you know better than anyone else, the city already has seventy-five thousand dollars that we used to pay the county, that we currently pay Bacchus.
Correct.
So if we were to do debt service, and we can get the debt service to be a twenty-year debt service, and it be of seventy-five thousand dollars a year or a hundred thousand dollars a year, and I know that that's more, but there's also additional funds that the city already has set aside for for buildings, for maintenance. So there's there is funds that would not have to go on to the levy. And those are all conversations that we have to figure out.
Right.
I mean, we're not, no one here, we all had sticker shock. We did not expect, we all, I expected it to be around two million dollars. I don't know where everyone else was, but I was thinking two. So just like the jail, the the jail, they thought it was going to be about half the price that it was. They they had taken out a bond, and then they had to go back and do it again. The prices were higher than what they had expected. This project that we're doing is higher than what we had expected. So we know that we don't have the money to do that. So please, continue.
And I think it would be much more manageable if if the people of the community had a sense that you were seriously entertaining the idea of going back to the county and having good conversations with them. I appreciate the the request for an invitation to the county to sit down at the table again. And if you're county to sit down at the table again. And if your conversations that you had before didn't work, maybe it needs to be reshaped. Maybe that committee needs to be reframed, size it down, have someone else help facilitate. There are other tools and mechanisms that can help make those conversations more profitable and more successful, more amicable, if you will. We, we have all heard that they were difficult and they were challenging conversations for the city to have and for the county, but both parties need to come to the table with the intent of finding a solution. They really do. We are not in a community where either the county or the city is overly wealthy. We're not. It's all coming from the same pool. People are concerned, genuinely concerned about the tax rates that are hitting them, and whether or not they're gonna be able to continue to live in this city, because the taxes are getting so high. 24.7% of the people in International Falls are 65 years old or older. The Social Security increase for 2025 is a mere 2.5%. We're looking at substantial, from school district, which we voted in, and from city, and from county. That's, that's big, when these people are looking at only 2.5%. 15% of our population today lives in poverty, and they're trying to figure out where it's gonna come from, too. Some of that 65 and older and the poverty may overlap, it likely does. But we need to take that all into consideration. We cannot continue to spend money we don't have. We can't. And I do think... I do think we need to, I didn't, I wasn't...
No, it's fine.
But we can't, hardly we can't.
And I, I understand that. And where my concern is, where I think that the city's council's concern is right now, is if we, let, let's say that the number is a flat $100,000.
Yep.
And we pay, pay a flat $100,000 to the county.
Yep.
The, the poorest people in Koochin County live in International Falls. We all can agree on that.
Yep.
And the city of International Falls is paying the county, which has a larger tax base, and your residents are being charged to do, to pay the county, to offset the county taxes.
Correct.
And when I say that, it, it sounds immediately like I'm not playing the game. But the long term is, if we own the asset at the end, we're not offsetting the, the taxpayers. We have, we have something at the end of the day. That's where I always get, I always struggle. And when we're talking about ambulance, airport, and, and the law enforcement center, those are the three things that we work with the county. I would love to have a better relationship with the county, and we have, you facilitated meetings at Bacchus for the city and county. They were unfruitful for two years.
Yep.
We've been trying to have those conversations. And at this point, all I want to do is make sure that the residents of International Falls are not paying a substantial amount of taxes that have to go to the county, so that the county can alleviate their taxes. We are unfairly taxed in International Falls, because at the end of the day, we are still residents of Koochin County.
Yes.
And so that is, that's what my concern is. I can't speak for everyone on this council, but that's why we're making the decisions that we're trying to make, is to make sure that we have assets at the end of this. Because after paying 20 years at $75,000 a year to the county, we have nothing to show for it.
No, you don't.
We have no building at the end.
But, 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 the county has its building and it has space that the city could rent from. And you're looking at another building that's gonna be built. If we don't fill up the spaces that are in the county, the city people who also pay county tax are going to pay, pay for those empty spaces until they are filled up. So essentially, those people could be feeling, they could be paying taxes on the Kootaska building converted over to a police department, and they could be paying for empty space at the county. So they'd be paying twice. So we need to take that into consideration, too.
Yep, I understand. And these are all things that we've been having the conversations, these have been in the conversations for the last two years. And I appreciate Councilor Kaler requesting us to have additional conversations with, with the county.
Yep.
There, we're also gonna be moving this project, more likely than not, from November into December into January. And our new mayor, Dill, is gonna be able to be part of those conversations as well.
That was the second part of my request, was that anything is tabled, or at, at least very carefully managed, until the new mayor is in place. I firmly believe that he should be on those ground floor, those entry-level discussions, to be a part of that. You have to go in as a team. That group has to put its feet on the ground together, set its objectives together, and then move forward to the county. You can't very well expect a person to come in and, and not have been a part of that foundational work. So please do consider that.
Hundred percent.
Good, good. All right, that's all that I had for today. But thank you for hearing me. Thank you for hearing the people out here. They, people have a voice, and it's constructive. We know that we have to be a part of the solution. So I want to thank the people who are here today, too. Because anybody can sit out there and complain on social media, this is where it matters.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna applaud you for that. Anybody else, anybody else have anything to bring forward? All right. So our next, oh, please.
Name's Tyler Weir. I live at 1201 Second Avenue East. I actually work in the jail, so I'm actually kind of excited for the new jail. So it's nice.
Excellent.
But you were talking about being transparent. You guys want to be more transparent and stuff. With the 1% sale tax that we've had, that's supposed to be for roadways and stuff, were you guys trying to use that to remodel for Cary Park?
No, can't. No, but I will say this, because this is where that, that line gets a little bit wild.
Right.
When we, when we put in the 1% sales tax, we had to list every single road and street that would be potential in that project.
Mm-hmm.
That road going into that, that area of Cary Park is on that, is on that, along with the sewer and the water and everything like that. To redo the building, you would have to redo all of that street and everything, so that money could go towards the street improvements, the, the sewer, the water, all of that stuff. So, no, but yes, because that road would have to be redone. So I just want to be very clear on that. So if we do the Cary Park project, some of the 1% sales tax would be able to go into that, only because that street has to be redone, and the sewer has to be redone, and it would be dedicated just for the street and the sewer.
And then, do you guys know approximately how much it costs for the, the law enforcement or the police to move over to Bacchus? Like how much the remodel, putting in secure networks and stuff, how much does that cost? Do you guys know?
We have a very good fixed number on that. I don't have it present, but we... I, I was just gonna say, we do have it on file, because we just did it from, from the police station, or chief. No, just say it.
So for the, the move over is approximately $32,000. Of that, the non-recoverable costing, nothing we couldn't transfer to new space, is approximately $6,000. Of that $6,000, approximately $4,000 is the glass we installed in front entry, which we can actually remove. So the number of non-recoverable is actually closer to 2,000. As far as the, the IT and tech support, we're a member of Minnet, the Minnesota IT organization, and we got that free of charge. They gave us a lot to sell with that portion.
Thank you.
And for anyone's concerns about law enforcement zipping down the roads and stuff, I, I can tell you from where I work and stuff, law enforcement is mostly all about. They're, they're not sitting in usually one spot unless they're trying to watch traffic. So I see that firsthand. I deal with some of the law enforcement, especially when they come up to the jail and stuff. Do you guys plan on having another meeting with the county at all about maybe renegotiating prices?
Absolutely. We just, we just discussed that. Yep.
Okay. Well, that's all I had there.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Please.
Cheryl Christensen, 604 Sixth Street. So when you say that the levy will not be increased, or you won't do this, if you take out a loan, how long is the loan? I mean, you're looking at 20 years, 30 years?
Could be a 20 or a 30-year loan.
Okay. Because every year, this population decreases, which means your tax base decreases. So 15 years from now, I mean, how can you guarantee that that won't happen? That 15 years from now, it won't be, well, we don't have enough people here to make enough money to, to, to pay our loan?
Actually, our tax base has went up.
It has gone up?
Yes.
Okay.
We've, we've lost people, but the tax base has gone up.
Tax base has gone up.
Because of the, the businesses and stuff that have came into the community.
All right. And as far as the money, you would, it would cost the same amount as what, or that you're, you would pay to the county? Is that what you're saying? Or more than that? To lease with the county, to go back and be in the jail and have everybody under one roof?
So historically, it was 75,000. That's what, that's what we paid in the past. We're currently paying 75,000 to Bacchus. Had we taken the, the amount that, that the county wanted us to have over the last two years, it would have been 112,884. And we have never been able to get a negotiated price on what it would be to move forward. So we, we have asked for that number about a year ago. We were told at that point that they still didn't have a number on what it would be. So we still don't know. And, and that's one of the things. How, how would we, as a city council, make a decision to go into a 18, or, I'm sorry, a 20-year lease with the county, not knowing what the price was gonna be?
Right, yeah, I understand.
And so that's why we did what we did. That's how we got to where we're at. So now, yes, if we have a conversation with the county and it makes financial sense, we would love to do that. But right now, I don't know what that, their dollar amount would be.
Okay. Because, I mean, because the, the people in the city are concerned, because they're hearing a lot of, we want our own space, we want our own identity, we want, versus, you know, if we're gonna pay $5 million for a building, that's 100 years that you can be, or whatever, leasing.
Yeah, understood.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, instead of having your own, and I understand at the end of the day, then you own it, but that's 100 years of lease time.
Probably 30.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's...
And we have to, we, we have to do our due diligence, too. I mean, again, this was put on the agenda, just so we could have this conversation.
Right.
So, you know, that's one of the things that we have to do. And we're gonna go back and have conversations. And again, I don't think this is gonna be a quick, immediate decision. We do want to make sure that the police, Police Department has somewhere to go. That's the most important thing that we have here, is to have the Police Department have somewhere to go that is not on the third floor of Bacchus. That was the goal two years ago, that's the goal today. So...
Yeah, we were all told that was temporary. I mean, we're wondering why they can't stay there, but you answered that question tonight. So, okay.
Was his answer good about the county not giving us a price? Because...
Well, yeah, I understand that.
That's what it comes down to. So us guys here, we were never given a price.
Right.
Or length of time.
Well, no, yeah, you can't agree to...
And I don't, you know, I don't, I raised five kids, and I wrote checks out to keep my family going. I would never write a check out if I didn't know what I was getting.
I agree. I agree. You can't say, yeah, we'll lock in for 20 years and then find out what the price is. No one's going to do that. So, right. We're just saying that if the price is right, then...
Come on down, Bob.
Right. Okay.
All right, appreciate it. Anybody else have anything to bring forward? Please.
Heather Clementson, 5907 Town Road 238. I just wanted to say, you know, I really appreciate the due diligence and really trying to weigh the options here. And I want to bring some balance and just remind, you know, like, I'm one of the 30-somethings in the audience, but we 30-somethings are still rooting for invest in your future. I have young kids. I don't want to leave. If we don't have things like the Police Department, if we don't take care of our ambulance, where are my kids gonna go? You know, my kids might want to stay here, and I want it to be an option that they stay here. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right. Again, I want to say thank you for all you guys coming. This is not the end. We are now at the point where we have a facility study. Now we can start doing the work to find out what makes the most sense. Councilor Kaler would like to see us have a, more negotiation with the county on, on how that looks, and if we can go into that facility. I'm not opposed to that. I don't think any of us are opposed to that. But we want to make sure, if that doesn't work out, that we have somewhere that we can make, that makes sense for our Police Department to go. I, I truly appreciate all of the folks here. I think this is the same amount of people when we, as we had at Bacchus, when we had the town hall on our Police Department, which Chief Koscheck had had that conversation with everyone of why we were going to Bacchus. So I appreciate everyone coming out. This is really, as Lois said, where, where democracy hits the road. So I appreciate you guys having come out and listening to how we came to this decision. And again, this isn't the end. So Betty, could you tell us where we would go from here?
Thank you, Mayor. What we've done is reached out and asked our finance person to work backwards from what we believed is, you know, the, about the $100,000, $80,000 to $100,000 of a debt service, which we currently are using as rent, and some capital funding, to find out what that equates to. And whatever that equates to, we need to work backwards to see if this is even feasible. That is our steps. You know, we have the study, we know what's there. What can we do with money that will be available with what we can afford? That is what you guys have been elected for, by these folks. That's what I'm hired to do, is the fiscal responsibility of these funds. That is our next steps, waiting to see that report from George Ilertson on what the amount would be. And then we would meet together and find out what we could do with the report and what is workable.
And reach out to the county.
And reach out to the county to see if, if there is still a space available. I don't believe there's space available in the, in the new jail, because it wasn't going to be built in that space. But whether or not the, the old LEC, current LEC space is or is not available, definitely reach out to them and find out what would be available. Absolutely.
Perfect. All right, any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to boards, committees, department heads, city administrator.
On that, I have nothing additional.
City attorney.
We have nothing additional, thank you.
We're not even done, guys. All right. Apparently everyone's hungry. All right, any department heads have anything to bring forward? All right, hearing none, we'll go, the police monthly report is in your packet, fire, rescue, and EMS report is also in your packet, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
I just want to remind everybody about the Thanksgiving meal, Donut, the Oaks on Thanksgiving Day, 12 to 2. Come on down. It's all about getting together and visiting and having some connection to that, that's what you're looking for.
Excellent.
I'd like to thank Rob Pastor for having Santa Claus up already.
Anybody else have anything? Well, today, it came up earlier that we may be an MS4 from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Today, I got the letter in the mail saying that we are gonna be mandated to be a MSA4, and we'll have to have storm sewer appropriations. After only six emails telling us that a letter was coming, the letter came. So that'll be in your packets next time. I've handed that off to the city administrator.
What's the date on that letter? What's the date that we have to comply?
We have six months, or...
60 days.
60 days to reach out back to them and start having correspondence of when that will go into effect.
All right, thanks.
So we go to audiences. Anyone have anything from the audience that was not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll, correspondence in your packet, you have the International Falls Public Library meeting information of November 13th, Arrowhead Transit information of November 2024. Our city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving, Thursday, November 28th and Friday, the 29th. Our next regular city council meeting will be in December, December 2nd at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.